Good evening, everybody. I'll call this special city council meeting to order. And Mr. Administrator, may we please have a roll call?
Yes, sir, thank you. Mr. Mayor Protem and council. Councilmember Dennehy is absent. Councilmember Schmisher?
Here.
Councilmember B. Smith is absent. Councilmember Stein?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy?
Here.
Councilmember Worthington?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hammack?
Here.
And Mayor Smith is absent.
Thank you for that. The purpose of the meeting tonight is to hear about the budget and to conduct a public meeting on the budget. And so with that, I'll open the public meeting. And please give us a report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. We have prepared a budgets. Budget preparation starts, you know, end of July and early August and go until we present the budget to council by October 1st. Feel that we've prepared a very strong budget, very prudent and fiscally sound. We always try to over-budget our expenses and under-budget our revenues, you know, expecting a worst-case scenario. With that, I'm going to turn it over to our Finance Director, Tammy Nordike, to go through the presentation. And feel free to ask questions as we go.
Good evening. So this will be our 2024 budget hearing. Our total revenue for 2024 excluding the use of reserves, operating transfers, sale of fixed assets, or proceeds from financing is $44,784,087. If you notice, there is a significant change in the amount of interest that we are anticipating. And that is based on the amount of money that we do have in our investment accounts plus the rate increases that have happened over this past year. The change in taxes is basically from the trends that we are seeing with sales tax. Since going state-collected, we've noticed an uptick in sales tax collections. The total expense budget is at $64,299,979. This is down from our 2023 budget, and that is primarily due to a decrease in capital It is anticipated that general fund will receive operating transfers from other funds of 1.6 million, proceeds from financing of 210,000, and we will use $7.8 million of reserves. With the use of reserves, the city is estimated to maintain 24% of unassigned fund balance as a percentage of operating expenses. This is in line with our financial policy. The use of fund balance accounts for transfers of nearly $1.4 million of ARPA funding to the, to other funds. We will transfer $500,000 to the Quality of Life Fund for the balance of the broadband project, and $870,647 for the SCADA project will go to, will go to water. And those funds we have left in general fund and are transferring them as they're, as they're being used just to help us track better the use of ARPA. In general fund for the expenses, we have our general government section, which includes mainly our administrative functions, which is the city clerk, the city administrator elections, city council, IT, finance, building department, and those, and planning and zoning along with economic development. The IT equipment calls for the replacement of the unirruptible power supplies. Maintenance capital includes building automation upgrades, the continued roof repairs at the various city locations, and again, we have the backup generator in there. Again, depending on if we can get grant funding on that. Personnel services for all city departments and funds include a cost of living adjustment of 4% and up to 2% merit to eligible employees. Also included in the increase in personnel services is a 3% increase in medical premiums. Purchase services is increased primarily from reallocating shared software costs to non-depart- non-departmental. That is one fun, one department we have in general government that if the costs support multiple general fund departments, we charge it there versus trying to allocate it to each individual department. If a software is specific to a certain department, then they do pay for that. Our public safety budget is our police department. Personnel services include hiring a part-time evidence technician and a part-time records technician. Also included are five potential grant-funded positions. This will include four police officers that will be assigned to bike patrol and one police officer that will be assigned to parks. All new and vacant full-time positions are budgeted at full benefits and family health coverage. The grant will fund up to $125,000 per officer over course of a three-year period. At the end of that, the city will be obligated to fund the positions for an additional year. So the 2024 revenue is anticipated, we have it budgeted approximately $204,000 for those five positions because we're spreading the revenue over the three-year period. And it is anticipated that the animal truck and police vehicles that are being budgeted will be purchased using a lease purchase. If the grant is not awarded for the additional officers, only one police vehicle will be purchased along with the animal patrol vehicle.
And before you move on, Tammy, if, if the grant, the cops grant is not funded, we do still anticipate funding one full-time position, a park ranger, which would cover both sides of the week. We currently have one park ranger right now that we're able to cover half of the week. This would be able to shore up the, the other half of the week. We, I believe, you know, Chief Schick has given reports throughout the year, and that, that was one of the needs that we, even if the grant is not funded, we think that we could still carry that one full-time position without the grant funds.
The next area of general fund includes our Public Works Division. The capital equipment includes a street sweeper, crew cab pickup, and a service truck, along with continuing of our capital projects, which is our street reconstruction overlays, ditch crossings, miscellaneous concrete repairs. And these are the ones that our streets department does. It's not part of the engineering department sidewalk replacement program. They are two different things. And then also the clock tower plaza improvements. The last section of general fund is culture and recreation. This includes the museum and library's operating costs, and then the capital that is re, some of the capital that is related to the parks department. That capital is essentially the bridge inspections and repairs if necessary. The park improvement fund, their primarily, their primary source of revenue comes from the Royal Gorge Bridge revenues. We are not anticipating having any grants come in directly to the parks improvement fund. The funding that they have received for the building is accounted for in our Quality of Life Fund. Included in parks budget is promoting two parks maintenance workers, two crew leaders, and adding back the two splash pad attendants. Those splash pad attendants are budgeted at less than halftime each. The transfer out is for the match for their building. So you will see that there's $750,000. It was budgeted in 2023. We are not doing that transfer this year, and it's being rolled forward to next year. And that is going into the Quality of Life Fund. Also part of parks but accounted for in a separate fund is our Conservation Trust. This revenue is primarily from lottery proceeds, and it is restricted on how we can use, use those funds. We will be purchasing a tilt trailer, and also we will be looking at doing the irrigation controls. Also in Conservation Trust is a $10,000 contribution that we receive from the county that is used for the purchase of additional books for our library. In Quality of Life, the primary revenue is grants and then the Royal Gorge Bridge. We do use the bridge funding to help do our match on grants. The major items in the Quality of Life Fund include the park shop relocation, the continuation of the community broadband, the multimodal master plan, revitalizing Main Street, four-mile lane bridge, the US-50 pedestrian improvements, the safe routes to schools, North Ninth to College, and then the US-50 lighting.
Interrupt for just a second. I'd like to point out that right now I can't see any online hands up, so hopefully, Amy, I know that you were, had audio earlier. If you have any questions or anything, you'll just have to kind of break in as we go along. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Mayor Protem. I do have questions and comments, but I thought I might save them till the end. I'm really appreciating Director Nordex's presentation.
Thank you. Our next fund is our two-way streets fund. The primary source of revenue is the dedicated sales, 1% sales tax. Estimated reserves at the end of 2024 is at $5.8 million before the inter-fund payable balance of $1.4 million. And we are anticipating having over $6 million in improvements done next year. I know with our new Public Works Director and the engineering department, they have been very good about getting projects out, and so I see that we're, we're actually getting some things done. The other item that's budgeted is the loan repayment. So in the water fund, our charges for service include the water usage fees. The 2024 revenue projection was determined by using historical actuals. Revenue does not include any operating transfers in. The intergovernmental revenue shown is for grant funding for the water master plan. Of the transfer that you will see in the budget of $1.1 million, $214,700 is to repay the general fund, a portion of the underage from prior years. We did discuss when we accepted the cost allocation plan, how it was determined that water had not contributed enough for the services from general fund, and this is a partial payment of that. We did not want to have the underage hit all in, in one year. We want to continue maintaining our, our reserves at an acceptable level. The transfer in that is shown for stormwater is from the general fund. It was determined that general fund had received two, two large allocations in the past from stormwater. And so this is the first of, we're anticipating a five-year repayment plan back to stormwater to help recoup some of those overages that, that happened in, in that transfer. The main projects in our stormwater fund include our roads, the East Main Stormwater project, general stormwater improvement projects. Those are little projects that we can get done without the big, without having the big, big projects go. And then we also have funds set aside for property acquisition. Some of that is just for easements that we may need. Our self-insurance fund is where we account for all the revenue and expenses for maintaining this, the city's health insurance plan. The revenue is based on the premiums, both the city portion and the employee portion. We have determined that by keeping smaller, consistent increases in our premiums is helping to maintain, maintain our reserves, and it also is making it our plan more sustainable. This, this places the, had the city in a better position if we were to have higher claim years. And we, at the end of 2023, we're estimating $1.6 million in reserves, and then at the end of 2024, we're estimating slightly over, over $2 million. We do have a 3% rate increase included in both the revenue and the expense side. Items that council will be needing to consider are water rate increases. The rate increases are being presented based on a recommendation from the Water Committee. The three options that they wanted presented were a 5% increase, a 9% increase, and a 14% increase. These increases are based on an average bill of 10,000 gallons per month.
And before you move on, we do have a council question or comment. Emily?
Thanks. I, I wondered, in looking at this chart, is 10,000 sort of the overall average usage on residential bills? And if so, should we also maybe put another line in just to show? I have to assume, and it's only an assumption, that there's a fair number of people living, maybe they're living alone, or there's one or two people in the household that maybe consistently use less than that, and so that we don't scare them, and they look at their bill and think, oh, I'm only paying this monthly now, and look how much more it could be. Just a thought on, in presenting to the public that we might look at if there's a need to do that.
Yeah, we can certainly do that. We'll be talking about it again next council meeting when we talk about the actual ordinance for raising the water rates, so I can provide some little more detail when we have a larger discussion.
Sounds good.
Just on water rates, if I may, Director Nordex, I'm not sure if you have another slide on it or not, but I am curious as to if there's a recommendation for an increase for the city water rates as well, so that we can stop the practice of citizens subsidizing the city's water usage. Thank you.
I do not have a slide on that. That is something that we are looking at as well.
Yeah, again-
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
We can have a larger discussion-
Sorry, go ahead, Superintendent.
We can have a larger discussion. We're talking water rates, but I did work up just a few numbers. If the city rate was turned to non-residential, in 2020, it would have been an increase of $141,724. In 2021, it would have been $147,288, and in 2022, it would have been $158,021.
Great. Thank you so much, Superintendent Paine. I'm really looking forward to that more in-depth conversation on our water rates. I appreciate the, the city's work on this.
I think at this time, Travis, if you can talk a little bit about the Water Committee and why they gave those three different recommendations, and perhaps if there was one recommendation over the, over another, probably be the time to bring that up.
Sure. So we did talk about this in our last month's Water Committee meeting. We came up with 5% for the base cost based on the Denver CPI, Consumer Index, just rate of inflation, basically, just to keep up. So 5% would just be keeping up with inflation. 9% was based on an old rate study that we had that recommended 9% increases year after year for five years. We've done three of those. Two of the years, we did minimal increases, I believe. So the 9% was kind of catching back up with a past water rate increase, and 14 would be to catch back up even further, basically.
And the rates are also shown for non-residential with the same increases with the 5%, 9%, and We're also needing to consider what our stormwater rate increase will be. The 5% for residential is approximately $115 per year. And for commercial, it's, it's approximately $57.47 a year. These figures are based on the average impervious area. This increase is based strictly on inflation. By continuing to have smaller increases that are tied to inflation, it's going to allow us to get the stormwater fund reserves built up. So when we have those larger projects that are not going to be able to be funded with our certificates of participation, we will have some money sitting there to do that. We are looking at at least $1.9 million in future projects. So this, this is a way for us to help get those reserves to be built up.
And I'd point out that those future projects, and Leo, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but those future projects are tied to some of the two-way improvements. So we have streets that need to be redone, but we don't necessarily have the funds in the stormwater fund to construct those streets to, to the design that really should be done to accommodate the stormwater.
Okay, and I do have a mathematical comment there. If we're looking at the proposed rate of 5.3 mils, is that correct, essentially, 5.3 mils? And we've got it five. So it's half, half a cent is the proposed rate, right? And if the increase is two and a half, then the, the percent increase is 50%. I think there's a zero missing.
Yeah, that's, that's what Leo was just pointing out. We did miss that zero there.
Okay.
Thank, thank you for catching that.
So it is 50%?
No.
No.
Five, it's 5%.
Okay, the zero was missed in there.
It should be .0002.
Got it. Thank you.
The calculation is correct. It's just not showing correct on this increase. Yep.
If you get enough zeros, your eyes automatically cross, so.
That's, that's right. When you see the ordinance to adopt our budget at the first meeting in November, there will be some changes based from what the proposed document you're seeing to what we're anticipating the final to be. Some of those include our projects that have started in 2023 and that have not been completed and will roll over to 2024. We are looking at our estimates and adjusting those accordingly. So if we thought we were spending more this year, and it turns out we're spending less, that money's going into reserves, and then it's being reallocated next year. And we're trying to capture more of that now versus having to make that amendment in 2024. And then also, we should have a better idea of equipment that has been ordered in 2023 that may not have arrived yet, and if we need to roll that forward into 2024. We also will be making adjustments to personnel, and that will be based on vacancies and if the positions are, if vacant positions are filled now, or if they're going to be filled after the first of the year. The impact with that is the majority of our vacancies are budgeted at a higher pay rate, and we may actually have somebody coming in with less experience that would not be brought in at that, at that rate. And then if we have changes during open enrollment for health insurance, we do try to capture as many of those as we can. We also may be making adjustments to the utilities based on rate changes that may, may happen. And then we also will adjust various line items down for bids- that have been awarded or will be awarded in the next couple of council meetings that will be carried into 2024. So we want to make sure that we get those covered. And then we will also adjust our property tax revenue based on our November election results. So that will, that could adjust the revenue. We are not anticipating making any decreases in our expenses, but what it would, it could potentially reduce the amount of reserves that, that we have.
And we do have a comment or question, Emily?
Thanks. On the subject of property taxes, remind me, do we have a limitation on the revenue increase year over year on property taxes? Is there a Tabor limit or anything on that? I know we set the mill at some point when we have a better sense of the valuation, but I couldn't remember if that revenue collection is limited.
Currently, the city is in a Tabor timeout, so we can impose our max mill levy.
If we choose to.
If we choose to. Yes, that is correct.
Thanks.
The remaining slides are just an overview of some of the highlights that have happened. It summarizes our staffing changes, which departments those impacted. Talks about our overall increases in personnel and how we're, how we're addressing some of our benefits. We do still have mandatory increases in police retirement until the year 2030, and so what we're doing to help offset that. We also have the capital equipment itemized. Plus, we have some of the items that were not funded, and these are primarily the capital items that had not been funded. We also have items that were funded below the requests. And then just for informational purposes, we have provided the costs of the insurance, both for Plan A and Plan B on our, for our medical, dental, and vision. And that concludes what I have for our presentation this evening.
Emily?
Thanks. I, I wasn't sure how we wanted to proceed. I have several general questions, and then I have some specific questions on different pages of the budget document itself. So I wasn't sure how we wanted to proceed.
So I, the, if, if we have general questions, I think this would be a good time to do it. But I'm, I think I'm similar to you. I have marked up the proposed budget and have several comments as we go through it, the actual proposed budget document. So without objection, I think we'll, we'll try and muddle through it that way and see, see where we get to. So if you have some general comments, would you like to go ahead?
I wondered if, if you, Tammy, or Ryan could point out where the budget item is in regard to the distribution system analysis. I believe that's proposed.
It is, and it's in the non-departmental budget under professional services, I believe.
Okay, that, I thought it might be there.
Lumped into that, that category.
Okay.
It's either professional services or contracted services.
And my other questions are really broader, not really necessarily specific to the proposed budget, but just, I'll throw them out there. We don't have to spend time on it right now. But just wondered, in looking through all of this, wondered if we, if there are grants that we should pursue for additional EV chargers on city property. So again, that can be maybe a separate discussion at some point. And then my other one is even maybe farther out there than that one, and that is just something I've brought up before, just that we hopefully will continue to consider how to provide RV parking for visitors. And, you know, whether that has a budget impact at some point, I guess it depends on what we decide to do. But those are my general comments and questions.
And I'll turn to Councilmember Schmisher. Do you have any general comments?
Before you move to Councilmember Schmisher, may I address a couple of questions there, or comments there? So, and maybe Tammy, you could talk a little bit about this, but we do have some places in the budget where we have budgeted revenue and expenses for unanticipated grants. So we, we do have some line items in there. So if there are grants that we do come across, we, we have accounted for that. One of the things that I've asked Elijah to look into regarding the generator is whether or not there's a possibility for using a solar system and a battery backup instead of a generator to keep critical services at City Hall going. So those are some additional things that we're looking at and doing additional research on.
Great, thanks.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Hemrick. First of all, thanks so much to City Administrator Stevens and Finance Director Nordeig and all of the city department heads and city staff. I know how much time and effort goes, it goes into preparing the annual budget, and I just really appreciate everyone's hard work on it. Most of my general and a lot of my specific questions, since I had to be out of town tonight, Director, Administrator Stevens and Director Nordeig were kind enough to meet with me for several hours earlier this week to kind of go through page by page and answer a lot of the questions that I had. I do have a couple of concerns and a couple of, kind of, I guess, things that I'm excited about or things that I want to flag, but they are all more specific rather than general. Would you like me to go ahead and do that, Mayor Protem, or would you rather that I wait?
The, so we can go through the proposed budget page by page if we have particular comments or questions. What, what, what is council's desires there?
Yeah, I'm thinking if we just kind of go through front to back and see if people have questions on various pages, maybe we can run through that.
Would that work with what you're thinking, Councilmember Schmisher?
Absolutely. Some of them are about trade-offs, things that are funded versus things that are not funded, but absolutely happy to go through in order.
Okay, the, well, for, for, for larger global questions like that, maybe, maybe we can talk about those, those items, if that, if that works for you. And, and then if there's further discussion, when we get to a specific budget page, we can also continue there. How does that sound?
Sure. That sounds great. Thank you, Mayor Protem. So my understanding of the city's planned funding of the Clock Tower Plaza is that we're expecting, or that we have received $400,000 in grant funding for it, but that we would spend $1 million of city funding, meaning non-grant funding, for Clock Tower Plaza as well. And given, I, I can't support that. I feel like we have unfunded public safety needs in our community. So I think that it's important that we ensure that we have a plan for how we would continue funding the coresponder program past June of 2024, and how we would go ahead and fund those four bike patrol officers if we do not receive the COPS grant. So I'm not comfortable spending $1 million of, you know, non-grant-funded dollars on Clock Tower Plaza when we have these unfunded public safety needs. Thanks.
Okay, so let's, let's talk about that a little bit. The, the $400,000 in grant funding that we're potentially going to receive, is that a dollar-for-dollar match, that we would need to match that?
There, there's no identified grant. We've budgeted, so the expected build-out of the Clock Tower Plaza as it was designed was 1.4 million. There are elements of their, of that design that could probably receive GOCO grants or, you know, potentially some other grants. We believe that we could build the, even if we did not receive grant funding, we could build the Clock Tower Plaza for $1 million with some value engineering or with the idea that parts of it could be built later. For instance, the kiosks, those don't need to be built right away. Those could be added later. So I'll let Leo talk a little bit more about that, if you have some additional thoughts, Leo.
I think you captured it well. The, the design that came out of the public charrette process totaled out at around $1.3 million. And then there are some, you know, just lingering, I guess, needs of the clock tower itself in terms of windows and seal coating and just regular maintenance things that we included in that number that's in the budget today. But as Ryan pointed out, the project is certainly scalable. There's still a viable project at $1 million. It just probably falls a little short of that full public vision that came out.
Okay, so the, 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 does anybody have questions on the budget document before page nine? Because really, we're on public safety investments, I think, is kind of the subject that we're talking about here. Any comments or questions on anything up, leading up to page nine? Okay, so the, I have, I have a specific question on that, and then, then let's talk about the, you know, what, what do we do if we don't get COPS, the, the funding? But on, on that page, on page nine, we're under public safety investments. Under, we've got a table there showing the new positions. And underneath that is a paragraph, and the last paragraph, the last sentence in that paragraph says, "The budget reflects approximately $41,700 in revenue per officer." What, what is that from? What, what does that revenue represent? Or where is that revenue coming from?
That revenue would be the COPS grant that has been applied for.
That would be the grant amount.
Yes, yes. It, if we are awarded that grant, it will pay $125,000 per officer over the course of three years. We felt that it was prudent to split that in a smaller portion over, over three years versus 100% funding or, you know, 50%, and then reducing down. We, you know, we felt that that was the best way to get that budgeted.
And so I, I think the, the points that Councilmember Schmisher is making is that perhaps it would be better for the budget to reflect, you know, show that perhaps that what, if we don't receive the funding, do we, would we still intend to hire these bike patrol officers? And are they all, it's just the bike patrol officers, right? The four, and the, and the parks? So we would just be, if we didn't get the grant, we would just do the parks?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. And so I think there's some concern there that, that, that if, if this is truly a public safety requirement or ask, that maybe we should, maybe we should look at funding that anyway. And is that, do I have that right, Councilmember Schmisher?
I'm all for using grant funds if we get them, but I do believe that we need to have funds in hand that we can use for this unfunded public safety need if we do not get that COPS grant. The other half, or maybe not half, but the other component of that unfunded public safety issue is the coresponder program. My understanding is the grant funding for it runs out in June of 2024, and that we do not have a plan for how we would be able to continue that program or to continue having public health professionals able to respond to public health crises instead of sworn police officers past June of 2024 if we are not successful with continued grant funding. I am all for using the COPS grant funding if we get it, and all for continuing to seek public grant funding for a coresponder program. But I also think that these are two things that we need to use our own money for and have a plan of how we'd use our own money for if we are unsuccessful in those grant endeavors. Thanks.
Okay, so let's, let's kind of take that one subject at, at a time, if that's all right. And let's, let's talk about the coresponder program. So right now, our, our coresponder grant runs out June of 2024.
And that is because the state is on a different fiscal year than us. It's similar, we had the exact same situation in the '23 budget as well. So we, we received funding for the second half of 2023 in the spring from, from the state. So that's.
Do we expect that to continue?
We, I'll, I'll let Chief Schick respond to that, but I believe so.
I can't say, Mayor Protem, definitively, but I can tell you that I had a meeting yesterday with the Silvista team leader and Emily Anderson from Behavioral Health, and there were no discussions about expectations of non-continuing of, of the grant funding. So I'm fully expecting that grant to continue.
Okay. Did you have a comment on that, Councilmember Tracy?
I think it's pretty much covered what my question was going to be. It seems that we would learn probably in the spring then, if for some reason it's not going to be continued funding after June. And just for me individually, I'm comfortable just leaving that the way it's proposed at this point. I, I like the proposal regarding bike patrol officer, parks officer, and what we plan to do if we don't get the COPS funding. And I'm comfortable leaving the coresponder for a decision in the spring if we need to do that.
So I think, I think the part of what we're talking about here is that, you know, if we, the, is it, the, of the council members that we have present here, is it, is it our desire that we see the coresponder program continue, whatever the, whatever the, the grant status may be? Is that, is that? That's where you got, we've got, I believe that's a thumbs up from Councilmember Schmisher. So we've got five thumbs up to continue the program. I don't know that we need to make any budgetary adjustments, but I'll leave that up to.
I, I don't know that we need to make any budgetary as presented, but if we receive word in the spring that it's not going to be funded, we will likely have to come back with budget amendments.
A budget amendment, okay. And then the kind of separate discussion about, about whether the, we get a grant for the four bike patrol and one parks officer. And as I understand it, Councilmember Schmisher is requesting that we, that we consider funding that, whether or not we have a grant, and perhaps using Clock Tower Plaza money as kind of the damper or spring to absorb that difference if, if it does come to pass that we don't get that, that grant.
I would like to respond.
Yes, that's correct, Mayor Protem.
I would like to respond to that comment. I appreciate the thought behind what Councilwoman Schmisher is talking about, but I think that we are at a critical juncture with our town. And what is happening across the country and what we should be looking at here is creating a sense of place. And we need shared open spaces. Shared open spaces are critical for that sense of place to continue. And when people come to our area, like we've been talking at various meetings, and are looking at possibility of, of trying to create business here or develop businesses here, the people that they'll be hiring, the people that they'll want to bring in, that's what they look for, is a sense of place. Places that, public spaces where you can go have lunch with, and with other people and, you know, have events throughout the month that, that bring people together, bring people downtown. But the most important thing is that sense of public space. And I think while continuing that program, but we, we don't know at this point whether we will not, will or will not get funding. Is that correct, Chief? To continue that?
Yes, that's correct. We do not know.
All the patrol officers that we need? Okay.
That's still outstanding. We're waiting to hear from DOJ.
Right, right. I would hate to kill off a Clock Tower Mall idea in exchange for making sure we have money for that. So that, but that's just, you know, my take on it. Thank you.
Sure, and, and I will, I will get to you, Kathy, in just a second. But, but remember that, as Director Evans told us, it's not an all or nothing on the Clock Tower. It is, you know, it can be lowered. We've got 1.3 million projected right now, but. but we don't have to spend all of it right now to continue the momentum that we've got, so-
Exactly, but we just, we need to at least make a start.
Gotcha. Councilmember Worthington?
I'm just kind of taking a step back, because it's my understanding that the Clock Tower project really wasn't going to go forward until we're sure that the, the cleaners building is taken care of, it's been demolished safely, and things that way. So are we still on the wavelength that we think that's all going to be accomplished in '24, to where the Clock Tower would even become relevant?
Yeah, staff is having meetings, actually, I think there was a meeting today regarding the, the new method laundry building and turning that into a parking lot. I think the, the goal would be first half of the year, with Third Street improvements and Clock Tower Plaza potentially taking place after Labor Day of next year. So, yeah, removing new methods earlier in the year, and as we discussed, Clock Tower Plaza would be later in the year.
So we can basically hope that this is a moot issue, because we're going to probably know by spring whether the grant is going to be continued forward, and we will probably not have started the Clock Tower before then, anyway.
Right, but these are two different, well, you've, you've-
Sorta.
You've, you've got two different grants on, on the public safety side. You have the, the Behavioral Health Grant for-
Right.
The co-responder program, but we also, we're also waiting to hear on the COPS grant, which will help fund those five additional positions.
Gotcha.
And that, that is something that we're hoping to hear by the end of the year.
Okay, so hopefully this is a moot point, but it's good to put it all in my brain, anyway. Thank you.
And something else to consider there is that if we, we do intend to fund one parks officer, whatever the outcome of the various grants, but if we needed to use some of the Clock Tower funds, we're talking about, about two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars out of the, out of the Clock Tower amount. And if that is indeed, you know, scalable, then, then that, that might be able to be accomplished too.
Well, yeah, I think what we have in the budget is, we've kind of already accounted for the scalability. We, we can build it for a million, but if we want to build the full thing, we're looking for grants for the additional 1.4. So we're, we're looking for four-hundred-thousand dollars in grants for Clock Tower Plaza.
So the four-hundred thousand is the scalable part, not the million dollars?
Correct.
Understand.
I will just, if I may, Mayor Protem, I will just say, I, I agree with Councilwoman Stein's points about the importance of a sense of place, and a place for community members to gather. I think that we do have several of those places already, and that they aren't fully activated, such as Macon Plaza. I support the Clock Tower Plaza. I served as the city council representative on the technical evaluation panel to select the, the firm that engaged in that public charade process, and it's certainly something that I would like to see move forward. Just think, unfortunately, sometimes we have to make hard choices, and we have to prioritize. I am, you know, we will know relatively soon as to whether or not we do get that COPS grant, and certainly, well, given the, the planned sequencing of new method laundry and then Clock Tower Plaza, we would certainly know well in advance of the time period that we would actually start work on Clock Tower Plaza, and actually start spending down that budget. So what I'm really asking for is that we see whether or not council agrees regarding the priorities, so that we can make that determination in our budget. From my perspective, I just, I think you have to put public safety first, and I think we, we know that we need additional bike patrol officers, and I want to make sure that we have funds for that, even if that means starting Clock Tower Plaza next year, and maybe finishing it in 2024. Or, sorry, 2025, thanks.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Schmisher, and Councilmember Tracy.
Thanks, that's helpful to hear, Amy, your, your views on that. I, I just would like to say, I don't, I don't want, in my own mind, to set up an artificial trade-off between public safety and a public space on Main Street. That I, it is a high priority for me to complete that project in whatever way that we can, and fund the bulk of it for next year. And I, I don't want to set up a false dichotomy saying, you know, it's either public safety or this. So there's a lot of other ways we could play around with the budget if that's what we decide we need to do, so. Just wanted to express that.
Do you, yeah, absolutely, Councilwoman Tracy. I, I reviewed the budget really carefully, and that was kind of where I thought that we could potentially find those funds, because it is fairly significant. If there are other priorities or other ideas that you have for where we could potentially find those funds, or if city staff have other ideas as well, we'd certainly be very much open to that.
No, I, I'm comfortable with the proposed budget as it is in regard to how those police officer positions will be funded, and for looking at this in the spring or whenever, if we don't get the COPS grant.
The, the one thing that I, I would point out is the, the difference between the two items that you're talking about. You have a, a capital outlay, which is, you know, a one-time capital outlay versus staffing, which is an ongoing expense. So there, you know, it, future years, that's going to eat into, potentially eat into reserves, and there may need to be additional funding to, to support those long-term. And that's, the, the grant was a good step to give us a test case to test how those bike, bike officers respond, and make a business case for future funding.
If I understood Councilwoman Tracy's suggestion, and if that is acceptable to city staff, that's certainly something I would support, where we make a determination on this particular item regarding the Clock Tower Plaza and the, the COPS grant. I mean, I think we could make it even earlier than the spring, since we'll likely know about the COPS grant this, this year. Thanks.
Okay, so, I'm struggling to summarize where we are here. Okay.
John, is there, is there a special, specific way you want to go through the actual budget? You don't want to do it page by page?
Well, that's, that, we're kind of, we're kind of doing that now, and we're on page nine.
On page nine, well, I had a-
Of our document.
Under, on, I have one small question.
Hmm?
Under the general government funds?
On page, yes, the previous page.
My phone's on, my, my phone's on. Okay, it's on, it's on page, the general government funds, it's on page eight. And it said, it's anticipated-
It's anticipated that the lease revenue from the Royal Gorge Bridge will remain flat? Is that based on their projections, or just how things have gone in the past?
We have discussions with them and get an idea of what their projections are, and then we also look at historicals. So we're anticipating, but on, based on both of those things, that they're going to remain flat.
Okay, because I had a conversation earlier this year, and that wasn't what someone said to me. But that's, I, I mean, if you, maybe that's just the big picture, but they did have a really good summer.
Yeah, we, we're expecting them to be just a little bit short of what we budgeted this year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, hopefully we don't have to go through this page by page, but the, as, as we do have comments, let's, 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 let's get them out. I do have a comment on page 11, does anybody have any comments on?
Sorry.
Yes.
Mayor Protem, would it be possible to do the same thing for the COPS grant funding that we did for the co-responder funding? I'd just like to know if we will be revisiting the cities, whether or not the city would move forward with funding for additional bike patrol or additional public safety officers if we do not get the COPS grant? In the same way that we did with the co-responder program?
So we're, the, I, I think that, that one way to say that is that, is that we're pretty sure we're going to get the grant for the co-responder. But we are, that is, that is a smaller budget amount. The, 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 the positions covered by the COPS grant do represent a, a different amount, a larger amount, about 200,000 a year. And as Administrator Stevens points out, that's, that will be, that would be then an ongoing fund. But the COPS grant itself is for three years. And so the, if, if nothing else, we could decide to fund it for three years, and then evaluate. But, so if I understand you correctly, Councilmember Schmisher, what we're, what you're asking for is a sense of counsel, that if the COPS grant does not come through, that we still find a way to fund the, the, that would be the four officers for three years. Is that, is that a fair summary of what you're asking for?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem.
So it, it'd still be, it'd be, it'd be four officers, plus the Parks Ranger?
Plus Parks Ranger, yes.
So five total.
Okay. So that, so is, what, what's your, what's your feelings on that?
I think that whatever the chief and, and his people feel they, is their absolute minimum, is for the incidents that they have to respond to. I mean, I think it's totally up to them to let us know what their minimum requirement is. Is it something that you want to grow into, or is it something that, that, I mean, is there a spread of what you actually need? Or is this your base, your bottom line of what you actually need? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, that, that's a great question. And, and I can tell you unequivocally, that would be our bottom line. That would give me two bike officers on each side of the week, so we'd have that full coverage and have those wraparound services. The idea that we have is a continuation of services on the front and backside of the week, and reducing those service gaps that exist currently, particularly between downtown and the calls away from downtown. We're still looking at data in terms of actual call volume within the downtown district, but I do know, in just a, a sense of talking with business owners and some of the town hall meetings that we've had, I don't know that the actual crime rate will represent how they feel. So there's, there's the actual crime rate, and then how safe people feel. We put the bikes on the, on the Riverwalk pretty consistently in an overtime capacity, and we had our, our park officer out there as well. And we've seen a significant reduction in incidents and camps, and I've had people come to me and express their, their relief, their, their comfort, they feel safer. So the idea with downtown is to do kind of the same thing, and reduce those service gaps that exist between radio calls and actually having people down here that build connections with the business owners, connections with people who are down here routinely, and working with our outreach on, you know, the homeless issue, getting services to people and things like that. So I think that, that four is going to be a minimum number that we can effectively work with.
So, so that's based, that's shift-wise and, and covering, so they're between, they're not racing back and forth between the river and downtown?
Their, their focus would be downtown and the parks.
And, okay.
So, yeah.
Okay, and so the perception thing?
Yes, ma'am.
That part of it? That may be something that we need to look at down the road, is how do we, how do we deal with, come in at that? The perception part? Because, you know, we, we have meetings where people come in and say that they're afraid to walk.
Exactly.
And I got to tell you, I'm 78 years old. I ride a mountain bike up and down that path three or four times a week, okay? And no one has ever accosted me. I do run into homeless people occasionally, I talk to them. I, I like to ask them, you know, where they're from, why they're there. But I've never had anyone actually, you know, menace me. So the perception, I think maybe there's some way we could come at that, just to give people numbers and, and maybe times they could talk to those patrollers, those bike patrollers about what they're seeing and that kind of thing.
I think that would be important.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Tracy?
Thanks, I, I was going to say a little bit more about the Riverwalk, but I, I'll just repeat what I said before, which is that I support the budget numbers here as presented in terms of the COPS grant versus not getting the grant.
Thank you. The question that I asked is if, and that I think Councilmember Schmisher is asking is, do we, do we, and, and so for you, that would be a no. You don't necessarily want to see an adjustment to the budget to cover the five officers, whether or not we receive the grant.
That's correct.
Okay, and I, I would be in favor of, of a budget modification myself. So is that, are you neutral, thumbs up or thumbs down on?
I would like for us to move ahead with the budget as it is, because there are so many uncertainties about that grant. And I would hate for us to adjust the buzzet, budget, and then out of the blue, we, we get the grants, and then we have to go back and rejigger the budget. So, you know, I, I would rather wait until that time and see, you know, what we can do at that point.
Okay, Councilmember Worthington?
I believe in the public safety, and I definitely want those additional troops on the ground, so to speak. But I do believe that with the uncertainty, that I think we can go ahead with the budget as is, and then address it later if we need to, because I do feel it is an important thing. But I think there's still too much uncertainty that can be adjusted a little bit later.
So with that, I think that, I think that what the consensus of council members here then would be to leave the budget as is, but I would add, the, from, from my perspective, is that what we're talking about is then if the COPS grant doesn't come through, to please have a discussion about what the city's response to that should be.
All right.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, so, we've made it clear to page nine. Any, any comments on page 10? Culture, recreation, public trust accountability, built environment investment?
I don't have anything until about page 28, digital page 28.
Okay, I have, I have, the, we are going, recognizing that we are going to have a, a further discussion on water rates later. I, I had several questions on digital page 12 about whether we make several assertions about averages, and whether we really have an average. It's, it's really more projected, I think, it's just a wording choice, but we can, I can pass those on later. And then under the water fund, a question I had there, it said, "Any excess revenue generated will become part of operating revenues." This is for the water fund. And, and my question was, shouldn't that be retained in a, in the water fund or, or a special restricted account for use by the water fund later, rather than just going to general budget, the, the operating revenues?
I'm reading that to say that it would be water fund operating reserves, but I could be wrong.
Operating, well, it's my understanding, operating reserves refers to the city.
Each fund has their own reserves. So if that revenue is generated in the water fund, and it's excess of budget, it stays in the water fund, in their reserves.
Okay. Then, the year, let's see, your next- Then the year, let's see, your next. So we, the, and looking at the timeline, this is digital page 16, we have several to be determined, or a couple, some to be determined and some dates in there of when certain things are going to be finalized for the budget, is that correct? Like the community agency is a, to be determined because we haven't had the meeting yet and we don't know what that is. And do we have placeholders in the budget for those unknowns at this point?
We, we do. We have a placeholder for the overall community agency funding and, you know, expecting second reading of the budget, the first meeting in December, so we'll have time to insert that before then.
Okay, thank you.
Correct?
Correct, yes, we do have, we do have.
I saw a questioning look.
Yeah, we, we do have the funds set aside for the community agency funding, but we do need to get that date for those meetings.
On the books, yeah.
That is the big thing right now. Because it, the, who we award to, as long as it stays under the budgeted amount, we do not necessarily have to have that before the budget is finalized. If the, if the committee is trying to award more, then yes, we'd need to have that before then, but we really do need to get those meetings scheduled.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have any other comments before digital page 28, was it?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go to di- digital page 28.
And the question I wrote down, and maybe it's answered later and I've already forgotten, but on pa- digital page 28, so document page 23, is that just sales tax or is that sales and use tax in those numbers?
That line is just sales tax. And that is just for the general fund portion.
Got it, thanks.
Okay, did you have another page after that?
Oh, I just, I guess I have another question on that page where the projection says potential decrease of taxable sales. Is that just our conservative budgeting or is there something else contributing?
We did actually see a decrease in our month over prior year. So when we compared August to August, our sales tax collections are down and so we're anticipating possibly that there, there's going to.
That could be a trend.
Yeah.
I think I noticed that because other months, I think most or all of the previous ones, we were up, but then we saw some, a change, so, okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood why. That's all I have on that page.
Okay. Do we have, what's our, what's, someone speak up and say the next page they've got a question on.
I'm looking.
I'm not until page 62 myself.
Oh, go ahead. I'm on 69.
Okay, on my comment on page 62 is the, just to give a heads up, one of the major goals and accomplishment in 2023 was expanded police department digital evidence systems by installing new interview room systems and dash cams for patrol vehicles. There is proposed legislation, as I understand it, through CML, Colorado Municipal League Meeting, that, that will allow officers that are in a recorded room to turn off body cameras while they're in that room and will allow some flexibility, as I understand it, when there's administrative meetings or for administrative staff, that they don't necessarily have to have their body camera on all the time.
I've heard the same, Mayor Protem. I, I haven't seen the legislation, but yeah, I've heard the same.
Great, thank you. Okay, where are we next then?
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Also on that page, page 64, I think it is, under the, the computer, sorry, I am back and forth, under the computer resources section, I just wanted to give a shout out on the contracted services. My understanding is that the IT department is planning to contract with a cybersecurity firm to do network monitoring. I know it's kind of some of the, the behind the scenes stuff that really does a lot to keep our city safe and to keep us up and functioning and just wanted to, to give them some kudos for their proactive thinking in that regard. Thanks.
Thank you for that. I do have a, a comment on the next page about the, this is a 2023 accomplishment where we evaluated cellular service citywide and identified the most appropriate carrier. How, are we switching carriers, is that correct?
There will be something that comes before council before the end of the year.
Okay. The, I, I do have a request there and my request is, is that, that the appropriate weight be given to the fact that the county has a donated cell on wheels tower for emergency use that is only available through Verizon and that if there's a different digital carrier chosen, we lose the ability to use that cell on wheels. And so I'm just asking that the, the use or non-use of that cell care, of that cell on wheels be considered in making that choice.
We, we will consider that, but, you know, based off of service and a lot of data modeling, we do have a, another, another provider in mind.
The, if we wanted to replace that cell on wheels, it's about a thousand dollars a month and about a $70,000 capital expenditure. And so you can use those numbers to help make the evaluation. And what page did you have, Emily?
Let's see.
Digital page 68?
Yeah, digital page 69 and that's document page 64. And I, I think Administrator Stevens touched on this a little bit earlier, but if you could just say a little bit more about the two lines, one of them being under personnel services, salaries and wages, the 116,000 in the budget there and the professional service 260,000. If you can just kind of line, line that out a little bit.
Sure. Yeah, the salary and wages, that is, represents a 2% COLA, so there, the COLA, I'm not, sorry, 2% merit. The merit does not show in each of the individual departments and that will be divvied out as we go through that process.
Got it.
As you're looking at personnel costs for each of the departments, that does have the 4% COLA in it. Going down to professional services, the professional services line represents the bill for the attorneys and then the contracted services line is where we have money set aside for that poll and lines study for the Black Hills system.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just, just to follow up on that, I don't want to cut Councilwoman Tracy off if she had anything additional on page 69 though.
No.
Okay. Um, just following up on the council discussion regarding the poll and line assessment, when could we expect to get the city's plan for how that assessment will be used and what city staff will have responsibility for any implementation that come out of the findings from that assessment to ensure that it's used before it, its shelf life quickly expires? Thanks.
I think we can, we could talk about that at the next city council meeting when we bring the budget forward. I, I think the hardest part about that is the, the direction that the, the committee and council wants to go after that, that study is completed. You know, as far as how long it can sit on the shelf, that, that will really be a council directive.
I'm kind of wondering if maybe it doesn't lose its value very quickly unless Black Hills were going to be making a lot of major changes in the next year or two in our distribution system, so I could be wrong, but I'm assuming it'll have some value for a while.
My, my concern is just I want to ensure that we have a plan for how this city will plan to move forward so that when that assessment is completed, we can move forward with whatever the plan is. I would hate to see us spend this money on an assessment and then have it sit on the shelf. Obviously, the polls and lines do continue to age and deteriorate over time, so it will not be as accurate after a few months or a few years as it is when it is completed. So I want to make sure that we have our next steps in line and we know what would actually, what it will be used for so that it can be used as expeditiously as possible. And given how much you have on your plate, City Administrator Stevens, I'd really appreciate knowing who on city staff will also be part of that process because I know it'll take a lot of time to ensure that it's used effectively. Thanks.
And I would say those, those are all good points and that is, that is probably appropriate for council to decide on perhaps a five-year plan, that we could consider the timing of different actions that we might take. I'm not sure that we're, that we really have good enough information to, to make that determination. Part of the re, part of the problem is, is that you do, to take any concrete steps towards moving away from Black Hills and towards some type of other provider, the, a study like this is, is, is kind of required. One of the other things that a study like this might do is give us a lot of ammunition with the Public Utilities Commission. We are, the, there is an obligation of, of Black Hills to provide a, a system that is serviceable and functioning and this would give us a view into that serviceability and functionality. But I understand your points and they're, they're well taken and I think that they're, this is something that, that we need to do further, further work on. And if the, you know, that it could be that we decide not to do this, this study, but, but my personal feeling is that we should leave this in the, in the budget, but have those based on, you know, activating it based on further discussions that we do need to have. Other comments?
Thank you, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, I, I did have one comment on that. I think another tool that's in our toolbox, if we have that study and, and it's done on our behalf, the city's behalf, I think that at some point, Black Hills would like us to put the, the, their, their agreement on the ballot again, have the voters take another look at it, the franchise agreement. And I think that might be a tool for us to sit down with Black Hills and say, you know, what, where, you know, we now know what the shortcomings are and what are you going to do about that before we present this to the voters again? I think that might be, that right there is a very good tool for that. Thank you.
Thanks for that point and, and it really does, what, what you're saying, I think underscores the need for council to make sure that we have some type of five-year plan in place and know where we're going. Yes?
One more point before we move off of, off of this page and it's related to Black Hills or franchise fees. The city code does require some set aside from franchise fees to, for PUC rate cases. That also is under the professional services line.
Thank you for that. Do we have some other comments or concerns?
Nothing until digital page 109 for me.
Okay, I'm on.
I have.
Yes, please go ahead.
I have just a, a couple of shout outs, more than anything else, on 70, digital page 72 and 76.
Sure, go ahead.
Awesome. Just really wanted to thank the building department and planning and zoning under their 2024 major goals. They're looking to implement online permits and online payments through a new software program and online plan review for new single family dwellings. I think that will be enormously helpful and, and really streamline those processes and just really appreciated seeing those under their 2024 major goals. I think it'll make, make things a lot easier for folks to be able to do things like that online. So I wanted to, to make sure that I noted that and appreciated it. I also just wanted to flag on page 76, unless somebody had something in the intervening.
Please go ahead.
Awesome. Um, just because I, I know it's something that is of interest to many folks about the Clark Station property and also Centennial Park. So this is under planning and zoning, that there would be a, a process to create a new master plan for the Clark Station, Black Hills property at US Highway 50 and South First Street, including drafting of an RFP to solicit bids, to first a consultant to assist the city in design and the public outreach process. It's a really exciting opportunity for the city and I'm really excited to see that as part of the major 2024 goals. That also obviously for me sparked the question of what will the public process be for the new space in Centennial Park and how will we ensure that we're getting the highest and best possible use of that space once the Parks Building moves to the top of South Ninth? So just wanted to flag that, my understanding, and City Administrator Stevens always, please correct me if I'm, if I am mistaken, but that the Parks Building would be moving during 2024 and we wouldn't actually be able to start renovations on that area of Centennial Park until 2025. So the public process would likely be in early 2025 and then those, those renovations to continue, the Centennial Park would happen later in 2025. Thanks.
That, that is all correct. We, we anticipate the improvements to Centennial Park after the Parks Building moves in the 25 budget.
In the 25 budget and the, that, that's good, the, but I, but if I understand Councilmember Schmisher correctly, she's also asking to make sure that we have a lot of public process there before we get to the budget to, you know, consider what would be done there. And I would, I would also just point out, the Councilmember Schmisher, I, I believe that we have a master plan that does cover the Clark area property and are you, are you thinking that that needs to be redone or what, what are your thoughts there?
There, I, I know you directed it to Councilmember Schmisher, but if I, if I may.
Please go ahead, City Administrator.
Interject. We, we have an Arkansas River Corridor master plan, which has a very high level concept drawing of what would happen on the Clark Station property. What we're looking at for 2024, what Patrick has in the planning budget, is something similar to what we did for the Clock Tower Plaza, where getting down more into the details of how things might, might be designed and having that more public input on actual features and functions of, of that site.
Thank you. And does that address your comment, Councilmember Schmisher?
Absolutely. And just a flag for Councilwoman Tracy, that I think in that high level conceptual plan, it does include quite a bit of RV parking, which would be nicely situated between town and some of the likely destinations.
I, if I recall correctly, I think it's more like people staying overnight in RVs, is that right, rather than parking to shop downtown? But we can work on that later.
That's true for the, the potential camping, but there are parking lots over there and if that's something we want to consider for the parking lots, that's something that could be, you know, that, that's why we do the public process.
Great. I did have a, a comment on, a digital page 85, under law enforcement standards and.
Sorry.
Yes.
John, I actually have one before that, if that's okay.
Sure, yeah, please.
Sorry to interrupt. Um, just, I understand that some of the entities in town that the city funds, such as the Fremont Center for the Arts, the, they aren't all under economic development, but some of them are, so I thought it might be a prudent time to, to flag and remind, such as Fremont Center for the Arts, the Golden Age Center, the Humane Society, the Chamber of Commerce, that during our last city retreat, we had asked that the process by which we determine budgets and evaluate budget requests be standardized to ensure that we're treating all of these agencies in a similar fashion and that we're getting budgets and profit and loss statements from all of them and that they each come before council each year to present and respond to questions. So just wanted to flag that and ensure that that process was underway as part of the, the budget built process and that the, that expectation had been made clear to those agencies so that we could ensure that we are evaluating their budget requests with all of the, the necessary information. Thanks.
I know we've had, I, I've had conversations with Fremont Center for the I know we've had, I, I've had conversations with Fremont Center for the Arts and Golden Age Center. We'll have to check on the Chamber and Humane Society about changing their budgets. I don't know if we've had those conversations, but we will follow up on that and anticipate some of those presentations happening in early December.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, I do have a question on digital page 85, not so much related to the budget, but, but tangentially, under law enforcement standards. Chief, do we, do we engage in any advocacy? I'm sure you do through the various organizations that you belong to. Is that, is that correct? Is there, is there a need for us to, as a city, to engage in advocacy? So what I'm, what I'm thinking of is legislature, you know, and, and making sure that if we have concerns, that, that our voices are heard in the legislature.
Well, I would always encourage that, Mayor Protem. I, I work with the Colorado Association Chiefs of Police Legislative Committee. In fact, we've, we've geared up and started our meetings here recently to gear up for 2024. But absolutely, I would, I would absolutely encourage council to advocate on behalf of, of Police Department.
Okay, I, that.
In any way that I can help steer that or, or provide you with information, I'd be more than happy to do so.
Thank you. The, the, that, my question was to determine whether we did, whether you, the department, was a member of organizations that did look at legislative issues, and the answer is yes there.
Yes, sir.
And absolutely, council, that is something that, that I think is part of our, our bread and butter through various organizations that represent us also. But, but also specifically, I was wondering, is, if there's, there, outside of what you know through the, through the police chiefs, there's nothing special that you need funds for to advocate, for advocacy purposes during this next year?
Very few funding items that we're focused on. Most of them concern the revised statutes.
Okay, thank you.
Just to build on that a little bit more, you know, as you mentioned, you know, we, various departments are members of various professional organizations. For example, Rick is a member of Economic Development Council of Colorado. They have their own lobbyists for economic development issues. We, we follow that very closely. We, we see that across many different departments, and, you know, we, we leverage that. We leverage our relationship with CML as well as we're new members of Action 22, which also has a lobbyist. So we try to align everything where we can, when it certainly fits the needs of, of the city and our interests, and the interests of the citizens.
Thank you for that. Okay.
Mayor Protem, I had just two quick shout-outs on that same page. Just wanted to recognize the Police Department for their efforts to pursue Colorado Association of Chiefs of Police accreditation, and also noted that they're also going to explore CALEA, the National Commission on Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies this year, which I think is really exciting, as well as the idea of analyzing national use of force trends, and then seeing what, how, how Canyon stacks up when it comes to use of force, then identifying possible training opportunities. Just really appreciate the Police Department's focus on professionalization and training, and ensuring that their police officers have all of the tools necessary to meet those national standards. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, have we got, what, who's got the next comment?
109 for me, digital page 109.
I, I had one before then, on digital page 103, where we're talking about the Streets Division overview, and one of the things that would be, that would be good is if we could have, if we could get a graphic showing a progress on street replacement. I'm not sure that, I think that would be, I think that's kind of important for us to have in our quiver, so to speak, because we, we always get a lot of questions on that, and if there was a visual way to present that, it would be really nice.
Are, are you asking for it in the budget, or just in general?
This is, this is in general. It, it wouldn't hurt to have it in the budget, perhaps next year, but, but, you know, something.
We, we do have a graphic on the city's website, which shows street progression and improvements through the 2A project. It shows not only 2A, it also shows the, the general fund improvements as well, correctly?
I can't recall off the top of my head. I, I know it's focused on 2A, but it may also include some of the, the chip seal conditional improvements that we've made throughout the years in resurfacing.
I know Christie Gotham, our Public Information Officer, had created it one, at one point. I'll just have to double-check and make sure that it's up there.
Okay, I'll, I'll take a look at that also, and if I have some feedback, I'll provide it. Okay?
Just on streets as well, just wanted to flag, it's been a little disappointing over the years, kind of our, our goals have not quite been met for the last couple of years on the amount that we hope to be able to accomplish throughout the years, and just appreciate Public Works Director Evans leadership, and looking forward to, to have a lot more being done in 2024 under your guidance and direction. Thank you.
Okay. Has somebody got a, another comment?
Just page 109 is my next one.
Okay, please go ahead.
Thanks. And that's document page 104. Just thought it'd be helpful, and it's on the same subject of streets, and this is general fund expenditure. Just looking at the street resurfacing line, the estimate for 2023 is $200,000. The budget for 2024 is proposed at $680,000. And I think we've talked some about what that's about, but I thought it'd be helpful to hear from Leo or from whoever about what goes into that $680,000 proposal.
Sure. That line item includes a number of things. It does include a couple of streets that we'd like to mill and resurface next year. I think we discussed doing those in conjunction with a couple of 2A projects. It also includes routine things that we try to do every year on projects in terms of cracked ceiling roads when they're at a point in time where that's beneficial, chip ceiling roads when at a point in time when that's beneficial. And then it does include some miscellaneous costs for things that come up for our street crews when we can make repairs ourselves. We worked on a section of 12th Street this year near the high school, replaced a bunch of concrete panels in the past. I think we've done work on Orchard replacing concrete panels, so. It's a combination of work that we contract and work that we do ourselves for street improvements in general.
I think, I think it's just worth noting that we are, as a city, we're proposing to put quite a bit more of general fund dollars into what you just described, and so that will be in addition to the 2A funds, and just, I think, shows the commitment that we, we recognize the street problems in our city, and we want to really work on those as much as we possibly can.
On that same page, if I am recalling Director Nordike's presentation correctly, some of the things that didn't get funded were some of the downtown alleyways, and also some street resurfacing. So I'm wondering if we could hear just a little bit more about what won't be done, based on some of the trade-offs that had to be made?
I, I know one of the alleyways that was, we were planning on paving was removed. Some of the utility partners were not ready to have that alleyway paved. I'll pass it over to Tammy and Leo.
I think the, the street resurfacing program, I just had broader wishes and goals than what we were able to fund. You know, we'd always love to be able to do more and do as much as possible, and it, it just wasn't going to be feasible next year. So I think our priority will still be on Oak from 10th to Yale, Four Mile Parkway, that were being done in conjunction with the Sean and Chime investment and the money that they paid the city for that work. And then we have a couple other projects that we've done design on and have ready in the event that we get, you know, exceptional bid pricing or have another opportunity somewhere else.
Thank you. What's the alleyway that we were hoping to fund but are unable to fund? And is it that we are, we're unable to fund it, or we just don't think we would be able to reasonably or feasibly get more than one done in a year? Thanks.
We had originally intended to do the 200 block both north and south of Main Street, but I believe the 200 blocks south of Main Street has utility issues, aside from us, that are gonna, you know, warrant a little more time, because we're asking them to also do work ahead of 2A projects and prioritize other things.
This would be the alley that's adjacent to Clock Tower Plaza?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Got something on a particular page? I do have one, but it's way towards the end.
Okay. The next one I have is digital page 119, which is document page 114. That second line, intergovernmental revenue, just, just a question about what that line is in the 2023 budget, the 2023 estimate being so different from each other, and then nothing in 2024. I just couldn't remember what that referred to.
That's the Park Improvement Fund.
In 2023, we were anticipate, anticipating applying for a grant to help cover the irrigation controllers, and we did not, we were not successful in finding something that we could do with that. The $15,000 estimate is a match from water fund to help cover some of the controllers we did go ahead and buy, and we do not have anything budgeted either in a grant or transfer from water to, to help cover that. And the irrigation controllers are now budgeted under Conservation Trust versus Park Improvement Fund.
Got it. Thanks.
Okay, another comment or question with the page number?
Let's see, some of mine have been answered. Let me, uh, Quality of Life Fund, so this is digital page 143, document page 138. And I probably know the answer to these, but I just put question marks by that first line item, and the, it says BHE, East Gateway Park Master Design, $200,000, and then also the potential grant line of $1 million. Just say a little more about those.
So the East Gateway Park Master Design, that is the Black Hills Clark Station property?
Oh, East threw me off. Okay.
Is that, yeah, it should be West Gateway.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, that'll, and then the potential grant line.
So in the 24 budget, we included in various funds, general fund, Quality of Life Fund, I think we also did it in Water Fund, a line item for potential grants. Throughout the year, we have the opportunity to apply for grants, so we went ahead and put in the expense and revenue to offset that. And so then, when we are awarded that, we essentially have funds already allocated towards grants.
So there's nothing more specific than that right now?
Correct.
It's kind of almost a placeholder?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
And I, I have something on 144, which is document 139. I think that's the next page, if no one else has anything. Under major goals, and this is for 2A Street Improvement Fund, I think maybe you just addressed this, Leo, but do we actually have a list of what we're going to be trying to do next year with 2A? And should, does that belong in here, or is it separate, or?
We do have a list. I believe it's available on the city's 2A website. We updated all that after our discussion back, I want to say, in July.
Yeah.
And under the, the major goals there, some of those are listed out.
Yep.
It's not everything, is that right?
I think that is the plan for '24, correct?
Those are the proposed construction projects for 2024.
Yeah, that, that is what council approved.
Gotcha.
Later in the summer.
Got it. Thanks.
Don't stop, you're on a roll.
Okay, digital page 156, which is document page 151. I couldn't remember, and this is in regard to our decision made several years ago to establish a program intended to encourage new construction of multifamily units. It says here, "Program runs from September 1st, 2021 to August 31st, 2023." Have we extended that, or is that still pending?
We have. That is a typo. We will get that fixed.
Okay, so what, what did we do?
We extended an additional two years.
Oh, thanks. I, I thought we had addressed that. Great. So now if we could just get people to take advantage of it, right?
We have some stuff in the, in the pipeline that hopefully they will take advantage of.
Great. Let's see. I, digital page 175, I think that was addressed earlier. That was just about our increase in earnings. For example, the non-operating revenue for the raw water acquisition fund shows quite a bit more in the 2024 budget than it shows in the 2023 budget.
And yes, that is related primarily to the interest earnings.
Got it.
Could I also ask a question on page 175, that same page? With the change in, with the change in policy with regard to those who are outside of city limits, who connect to the city, giving funding towards the raw water acquisition fund rather than ditch share permits, are we anticipating an uptick? Is that why there's, in the use of funds, it goes from $29,000 in the 2023 budget to $36,000 in the 2024 budget? Or could you talk a little bit more about how that change in policy may impact the raw water fund? Thanks.
So it, it would be an increase in revenues. It would not come out of use of funds. I don't know, Travis, do you have a, a reason for an increase in use of funds, just anticipated additional acquisitions?
You got it. Having ourselves a little bit more of an ability to grab any opportunities that are out there for the use of funds. For the question of whether we have increase in TAFs or non-operating revenue, I think that'd be kind of a temporary question, but I think with year one, we're just not too sure how that's going to play out.
Okay. And yes, completely understand that the funding would, I'm, I'm assuming, go into one of the two revenue lines. I'm just wondering if we are planning to increase the amount of raw water that we're acquiring based on that new policy. It looks like it's a little uptick in 2024, so my question is, as we presumably get more money into that fund through this new change in policy, do we actually anticipate acquiring more raw water out years, or is that something that it's just too soon to tell, kind of what the change in policy will lead to?
I think we're, we're always looking, and if there was an opportunity that was more than $26,000, we'd bring that to city council if the opportunity presented itself.
Okay, thanks.
And that's all I have, Mayor Protem.
Okay. Councilmember Schmisher, did you have anything prior to page 201?
I don't believe so. As I said, I, I had a very long meeting with City Administrator Stevens and Director Nordike, so they answered most of my questions beforehand. So no, I don't have anything before 201. Thanks.
Okay, so the 201 is community agency funding, digital page 201, page 196 on paper. And my question is, should as, as we recognize cost of living increases to city employees through COLA, increases to their salaries, shouldn't we consider some type of COLA, quote-unquote, increase to our community agency funding?
I, I think that is a policy decision, and if council wants to consider that, we're happy to take that direction.
I do know that. I do know that, just as, starting the discussion off here a little bit, that we've, we've set it arbitrarily at $50,000, I think, and it's been that way for several years, but as, as inflation eats up all of our savings accounts and checkbooks, it might be wise to consider, and the same is true for our agencies, it might be wise to consider some type of cost of living adjustment, or inflationary adjustment to that fund as, as we go along, I don't know what, what other councilmembers' thoughts on that are.
Very supportive, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Okay, I, I just, I think the deadline passed, correct, for applications, do we have a dollar amount that we've received in applications for the funding?
I do not have that with me, I can follow up with council with that figure of requests.
Yeah, I, I'm just curious, not that we can fund all of what's requested, but I, I certainly think that's worth considering doing an increase in that total, in the $50,000, maybe up to 55 or something, whatever we think we can do.
Councilmember Schmisher, did you have a comment?
Oh, just similar, very, very supportive of increasing it, I don't think that there's any way we could fund all of the requests that come in, but we have some very, very wonderful organizations that are doing fantastic work in our community, and I would love to be able to, to fund a bit more, especially when you look at the cost of inflation and how far the dollar is going, so I would, would love to hear a recommendation from city staff as to if they do think it would be feasible to uptick that to, to 55 or 60,000. Thanks.
Okay. Well, I think that brings us to the end of our document, unless someone has other questions? Yes, Councilmember Schmisher?
Sorry, I, I did just, on community agency funding writ large, and, and we could certainly talk about this at another time, but I was wondering if we, in our review process, I think for the past couple of years, there's been a little squishy, squishiness in it, in terms of what specifically has been required, and whether or not we've been okay moving forward without folks being there, or without all of the documents requested being there, so just maybe having some, some more clear outlines, certainly in line with what was requested that they include in their application, but I think that that might aid us in our process a bit, if that's feasible, Director Nordike.
So Mary Pat, one of our accounting managers, she has been the primarily, primary contact for our community agency funding, and as the requests came in this year, if they were missing documents, she reached out to them and told them that what they're missing, and gave them the opportunity to provide that to us, so we will have that before the meeting. She also, when we sent the letter out, it did say that they do need to do an in-person interview, and so that should be very clear, and when we call to make those, when we call to get the appointments set, once we have a date picked, then we will make sure that they're aware again of, they need to be here in person, and if they are not, then they will not be considered for the funding. We also made sure that if they did not have their own 501(c)(3), if they were being sponsored, that they have the sponsor with them, so that we do know that they do have the authorization from those 501(c)(3)'s, because we did have an issue last year with that, so we are tightening up on that.
Sounds good.
Does that answer your concerns?
Yes, thank you so much, it, it definitely answers my question, and I really appreciate the hard work that goes into it. I do have one other, just presentation request for next year, with regard to how the FTE authorized positions are, are displayed, if it would be possible to have a column with the 2023 authorized FTE, and then a column with the proposed 2024 FTE, I think that would be really helpful in terms of comparison, the, the asterisks after the name showing which ones had changed, enabled me to kind of go back through the document and piece it together as to what the specific changes were, but it would be super helpful to have that kind of cross-comparison for, for next year's budget. Thank you.
Okay. The, are there any members of the public who would like to speak? Are there, number one, is there anything more from council? We good, is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak? We've good, we do have several staff members here, I don't know if they're, if you would, if the administrator would like to hear from staff members if they so wish, or what?
We, we ask staff to be here in case there were any in-depth questions on any particular item, so, but, just as you did at, at the beginning, council, I'd like to thank our staff, every year, this is quite the process, and every year, they do a very good job of trying to hold the line and put together a very comprehensive and thorough budget for us.
I'd like to second that, and thank you all for being here, I'm looking at the staff members in the audience, and staff members at the, at the table, thank you for being here, this can sometimes be a painful process, but, but necess, it's a necessary one.
Really appreciate it.
And with that, I don't believe we have any other, other comments, and so I'm going to close the public hearing, and City Administrator Stevens, so what's the process from here?
From here, this will come to the next city council meeting, so the first meeting in November, you'll have a resolution and a ordinance, correct, as well as ordinances for consideration for rate increases for water and stormwater, as far as tonight goes, you're ready to adjourn whenever you are.
Then, we are adjourned, thank you very much.